On uranium mining, which Christian Litz is going to provide, as well as SIPSA post 2018. Ron Williams will give us an update there. We had a placeholder for discussion on the Animal Advisory Board. Because the council has put together the composition of that board, it was just a placeholder. So we don't have a formal presentation on either the Animal Advisory Board or anything related to the center. So that gives us an opportunity tonight to dig a little bit more into uranium and SIPSA. That's where we are.
I know we have some friends here who are interested in the makeup of the Animal Advisory Board. Tommy, make sure I get this right. Animal rescue of tide water representative?
Virginia Federation of Humane Society.
Virginia Federation of Humane Society. The ethical treatment of animals representative, Norfolk SIPSA representative, Friends of Norfolk Animal Care and Adoption Center representative, licensed veterinarian who lives and works in Norfolk, and then three citizens. We have three non-voting members. And that would be the Bureau Manager of Norfolk Animal Care and Adoption Center, Police Captain of Animal Control, and the Public Health Director. And we will actually flesh these names out or ask these groups who are their representative members and come to agreement on who the three citizens will be at our next meeting, which will not occur for about three weeks, I think.
Yes.
Okay. All right. It is approaching six o'clock. I don't know if we have any council interests or not, but let me start with you, Andy.
These are a couple of things that really haven't had a chance to deal with offline. Marcus, one of them, he was a gentleman who was in front of, he was getting signatures for a campaign in front of Pretlow Library. He'd been there for days. He'd been cleared by the head of Pretlow Library. And then something occurred where they asked him to move off the property, that he couldn't do it any longer. It was, again, he was collecting signatures so we could get on the ballot. Now, it is public access, it is free speech. I saw nothing wrong with it. If you could look into what happened, he is a resident in my ward, and I apologize if we couldn't do that offline, but I just received it. Also, I've been contacted by the Clerk's Office in General District Court, and I appreciate there's some word going around. And I understand that if you're on the city payroll system, that you receive the HRT 365 ride. And Circuit Court gets it, and I believe other constitutional officers get it. General District Court Clerk's Office contacted me. There's 54 people there, there's 17 at J&amp;D Court Clerk's Offices that are interested in that. Because their checks are Kamau, Virginia, not City of Norfolk, they can't participate under what the city's plan is. Can you examine that and somehow work a solution at those Clerk's Offices? It sounds so strange that somebody who walks off the train and goes one way and has the opportunity to be part of the City of Norfolk system because he's a Circuit Court Clerk, and then the one that works the General District Court can't participate merely because the checks come from two different sources, even though money does come from the state for both.
Sure.
So it's just an odd system. If we could look at that, I'd appreciate that. Also, I think, you know, doing boards and commissions today is something that really, and it's probably maybe my, just having been here for a couple of years now and kind of figured out some things, and something that we really need to begin to do is, and I haven't seen it, is perhaps demand from these boards and commissions, demand that they produce their minutes to us. I know that those that Stanley and I go to, let's say, regional jail, I know that I've given a report in the past on the Highway Commission, and I've mentioned it during Council Concerns. But I think what happens is that we somehow need, and perhaps this needs to be an agenda item for the retreat, and that we need to somehow either divide up the certain boards and commissions and each of us liaison with them. That way, we have a greater understanding of what they're doing. I think in the past, we've seen some get out of control. CSP was a good example of perhaps how it got out of control because perhaps we weren't there. School Board. School Board, you know, a lot of times in the press, we get, as council, we get vilified because we give them 300 million, and we say, "Go do what you want with it," and then we get a report back every so long. But perhaps we need to step up and be much more cognizant of what our boards and commissions are doing, have either assigned me five, assign Tommy five, or Terry five, and that we are the liaison for those boards and commissions, that they contact us when they're in need of something. That way, they don't have to call all five of us. That way, we can bring that concern to the table since they are constituents. I think it's, then it allows us to give our vision back to them, what we had talked about earlier. It's a vision thing. If we have a vision, we should be the ones that are giving those visions to the commissions and the boards. And we can easier do that if I give a memo back to that commissioner board, or I go to their meeting. I've been to a couple, but a public arts commission, and I've been to their meeting, that if we have a vision to tell them what our vision is to make it happen, the new Animal Advisory Board, give them our vision. We want to be a city that doesn't kill animals, then we do that. We express that vision as a council. And I think that we need to perhaps work that out and discuss that really, and how we can do that at the retreat. That is really...
Be glad to set aside.
Yeah, we just...
We have a lot of topics, but that's a good one. In the past, on occasion, we've assigned council members, I mean, years ago, to that, and we got away from it. And I think Virginia Beach does what you say.
I do.
They assign council members as liaisons to the school board and some other boards. You know, we can have a good conversation.
I think it gives, that way, when we're, I know we meet once every year, once every two years, and we've met with certain boards and commissions. And I know that we've been out to the Potato Gardens, and we've seen and met, but it really becomes much more of a hands-on process. And it's something that I've really thought about, and it's kind of gotten away from me and gotten away from us. And if we can make it a retreat issue, perhaps, it's probably where it needs to be. I think those are the only issues that I had. So, thank you, I'm sorry. I should have done perhaps all those offline if I had time.
One other issue about the General District Court. I've gotten a letter, and I think the other council members have, from a judge who's over General District Court, who's concerned about where the bus stop is there on St. Paul's. We got a letter in mid-June, Ron, and then I got a second letter today saying, apparently his first letter was misplaced. And a little tongue-in-cheek, but he's got a good point. There's a lot of activity in that little block. You don't need to tell us now, but we've got to respond to the judge, and there's the light rail turning, there are buses, there are people trying to jump across the street, there are cars. There's a stoplight just within a few feet of that, there's a four-way stoplight. So, okay, we'll talk about it. It's great.
Yeah, okay. On, let me see, on Norchester Avenue, almost an intersection of Myrtle Avenue, there's a, it's not actually a power station, it's actually a tower, and that tower is fenced in. And it has been, I don't know how long it's been since it's been cleaned, but it's just, you know, terrible eyesore to the community. And I would imagine it's Virginia Power Tower, and so they have the key. And so they really need to go in there and clean that thing up. And so, Norchester Avenue, almost at the intersection of Myrtle. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I'll have it.
Anthony?
We've got to get a better relationship with Dominion Power as relates to, what we call acquisition and demolition. It's taken entirely too long for demolition to take place on buildings. And we should not have to wait after we awarded a contract three months. And I was trying to find out who contacts the Dominion Power to secure that. And they said, "Well, the city does." So I would think that we would have a better relationship where it doesn't take three months. I mean, I worked with them on quite a bit of, quite a few projects, and even my own personal project, and it has never taken me two to three months to get a power line disconnected from a home to demolish the building. And so that is, you know, I don't know where the breakdown is, but, you know, if somebody tells me that something is scheduled to be taken down this month or the following month, and we're still waiting one or two months later, that's not good. And still don't have any definitive timeline, whereas to when this is going to take place.
What's the problem?
The Chinese restaurant on Virginia Beach Boulevard in Merriman. Also, I spoke with Frank, I just wanted to, as a matter of record, as we, you know, we approve a lot of different projects, as we approve these projects and these projects get on the way, I think it's important that staff, whether it be, well, out of Frank Duke's office, basically, that what the guidelines that we put in place, that when someone comes to us and present a project, that we go out there to make sure that they are actually doing what they said they would do. I think a lot of times you get projects where we don't have, NRHA has good oversight because they're involved from start to finish. But as it relates to our oversight, I don't know if we have on this side of the aisle the manpower to do so. But I just think it's important, especially major projects, to be able to have that oversight, to go out there and make sure that they're following the letter of the law. If they say that they're going to have 35% of shrubbery of vegetation, then that they're adhering to that. If they say that these are the setbacks, so on and so forth, then they're following that. If they say that they're going to use X number of types of material, that they're doing so. And so, I see that a lot of activity taking place, but I don't see the inspections.
Take care of mine.
Yeah, just two things. First one is with fest events and op sale, I think it would be great to recognize the work that they did at a council meeting. I don't know if it has to be in resolution form or not, but I think, and maybe get a report back from that. I know they're probably compiling the data, but just wanted to make sure that stays on the radar with it. And then the other one is, this has been brought up, I've heard it three times in the last two years, with HRT and the bus stops. You know, there's already a stigma on bus stops, and it doesn't help when HRT is not keeping them clean. And what I've noticed with it is they have garbage cans by them, and they're not collecting them at a fast enough rate, and the trash is pouring out, and it blows all over the place. And by the Pretlow Library, we've been complaining about this for two years, trash is overflowing on them. Last time we addressed it with HRT, they said they were going to try to do a better job in getting people out there faster. It happened to be that the next morning, I'm driving down Grammy Street, there's actually a guy in a pickup truck that is hired, I guess by HRT, who goes around and picks the trash up at the bus stops. I just, I cannot understand why, when we have public works and a great waste management that drive by these, that we can't have the contract or the business to take care of the trash at these locations. And maybe it's a regional thing, but I just think that our guys would do a much better job. It would get picked up faster instead of, you know, people having to sit with us and trash there. It's just ridiculous that this is continuing after two years. And I know Stanley, when, last time we talked to him, they said, "Oh, they take care of it," and we were out there, somebody got on the phone, and the guy came out there in a pickup truck, and they throw it in the back of the pickup truck and they drive off. It's not a, I don't think it's a professional company that is maintaining this. And they literally just stay right there at the garbage can. They take the trash can, the trash bag out, put it in the back of the truck, they don't pick up any of the trash unless it's right there on, around the garbage can. They said they're not responsible for anything that is off of there. And I know if our guys were doing it, it would be done top quality, and it would look better than what our citizens have to deal with every day.
Can I chime in on that with lighting? I mean, the HRT bus stops, at night, some of them are really dark, they're not near streetlights, and they're not safe. If you have women, children, teenagers catching a bus, and they're standing in, I mean, it's a great shelter because it covers them from the rain, but we don't want them being covered from getting mugged or raped or killed or something because there's no lighting in those shelters.
How, when we bring up issues with HRT, how does that conversation happen? I mean, I know Barclays are a ref on it.
And Ron Williams has started a meeting with HRT staff, and our staff, we actually had one last Friday, with a lot of these issues that we went around the table, talked about. And we'll say that William Harrell is very receptive and very responsive to some of the issues, many of the issues that we bring up.
We didn't address those. We're discussing.
That trash issue is citywide, it's not just...
I mean, it's almost every station. I mean, and it's not just where they have, it's where they have every stop, actually. I mean, even on Hampton Boulevard, in front of James Madison. But, you know, we really ought to, you said we have these meetings, and we are by far, what do we pay, 40% of their revenue comes from Norfolk?
That's right.
You know, we ought to demand almost, you know, a couple times a month meetings with them, or more. I mean, just the way that they police the city with picking up trash, it never occurred to me that maybe our own people could do it. But, I mean, that's something we ought to explore, I mean, that's for sure.
That's it.
Well, on that subject, Paul, do we know where the governor's going to appoint the commissioner?
He's got it in front of him, and he just is, you know, he's been making a lot of appointments, although I don't know when this one's going to, I know Delegate, I mean, Thoma Drake is working on it, too. I don't really have anything. I mean, there's the AP Moller made another presentation today, another proposal to the VPA. We'll have to get a copy of that, and I think that's already been emailed to us. They emailed me a copy, but we ought to circulate that to the council. Tomorrow morning, we'll hear, and also, I'm told the Maritime Association made a presentation to the port today, and they're expressing their concerns. So we ought to get a copy of that to everybody so we can be up to date on what, at least what the Maritime Association is thinking as well. The new VPA report, the new Moller port tried to at least resolve some of the issues of some of the steamship lines in it. There is a movement, or there is some, there's going to be a study performed between, and Terry can actually mention this, but between Weber Mary and EVMS as to an affiliation. We may at some point...
We're announcing that tomorrow.
I think it's already out there somewhere.
It's stupid.
Yeah, it's out there. But that's just an exploratory, so, okay.
Right.
But if you read in the paper, I don't know that we've been asked to even say anything. Okay.
Good evening. This presentation is intended to give you updates on the Coles Hill uranium mining project and the associated efforts to lift the moratorium that's currently in place on uranium mining in Virginia. And you may recall that council was previously briefed on this topic in November of 2009 and then last March. And I'd like to take just a couple of minutes to review some of the things that we talked about, the very basic uranium information that we talked about in your first presentation. Uranium is a radioactive element that gives off energy as it decays over time into becoming the non-radioactive element red. And you're not going to see this on the slides here, this is just a review from last time. It's used as a fuel in nuclear power plants. And the price per pound for uranium has varied greatly over the last several years. It was around $10 a pound in 2003, and went as high as $100 a pound in 2009, and has come back to in the $65 or thereabouts dollars per pound. You obtain uranium by mining ore that typically contains less than one pound of uranium oxide per 1,000 pounds of ore that you have to mine. And uranium oxide, which is called yellowcake, is extracted from the ore that you mine, typically by crushing the ore and then applying a leaching solution that's usually sulfuric acid. And this mining process creates huge amounts of waste product, including the leaching solution and 99% of the ore that was mined. And that waste ore contains, or retains, 85% of its original radioactivity for hundreds of thousands of years. And this waste product is called mill tailings. And they're usually stored in slurry ponds, and then eventually they're deposited in earthen confinement cells with clay liners and caps, kind of similar to a landfill. In 1983, the General Assembly placed a moratorium on uranium mining due to public health and environmental concerns. And because of a large deposit of uranium ore that's estimated to be worth $7 to $10 billion that's located in Coles Hill in Pennsylvania County, there has been a strong lobby to have the moratorium against uranium mining lifted. Norfolk's particular interest in this relates to our water supply. And the Coles Hill uranium mine, or uranium deposit, is located by the Bannister River, which drains through Carr Reservoir into Lake Gaston. And the City of Virginia Beach pumps Lake Gaston water into our reservoirs in Suffolk and Islay White County. And those reservoirs are the primary source of water for most of South Side Hampton Roads, including all of the City of Norfolk, all of the City of Virginia Beach, all of the naval facilities in both of those cities, the city of, or much of the City of Chesapeake, in times of drought, the cities of Portsmouth and Suffolk, and in the future, on a regular basis, the City of Suffolk and Islay White County. This map shows at the top left the location of the Coles Hill deposit and the possible uranium mining site. And then if you look down at the far right, you can see the Lake Gaston pump locations. And they're actually located in a little tributary off of Lake Gaston called Peahill Creek. And you can see along the waterway there, there are numerous public water supplies. This map is from a much higher level and shows the Lake Gaston pipeline from, by the blue line with the blue dots on it, from Lake Gaston to our reservoirs. And then it shows Norfolk's pipelines from our water sources to our water treatment plants by the red line with the red dots. Norfolk has already taken a stand regarding uranium mining in our statement, in our 2012 legislative priorities. And Norfolk stated that we oppose any legislative efforts to lift the moratorium on uranium mining unless it can be demonstrated that uranium mining can be done in a way that's safe for the environment and our citizens. In addition, we requested that the uranium mining moratorium be left in place at least until the 2013 General Assembly session. And part of the reason for that was that there were a number of studies underway that had not been completed. A number of these studies have now been completed, and I guess one of the first is a study that was done by the National Academy of Sciences, and it was a general study of uranium mining in Virginia, not specific to Coles Hill or any other project. And this National Academy of Sciences noted that the federal government has no experience regulating uranium mining in areas with wet climates similar to ours. All their experience is out west in arid climates. And the National Academy of Sciences study also pointed out that Virginia has absolutely no experience in regulating uranium mining. The City of Virginia Beach had a consultant do a site-specific study, study of how the Coles Hill project might impact their Lake Gaston water supply. There were also two socioeconomic impact studies done of the Coles Hill project, and they indicated that the project could bring $150 million a year in revenue and about 1,000 jobs to Pennsylvania County. However, they also noted that there would be measurable impact, negative impacts, to the air and water and ground around the uranium mining site, and that if there were any kind of a multiple small or one large mishap at the site, that that would wipe out all of the economic benefits of the project. Then the City of Norfolk recently had our water quality consultant do a study of the impact of the Coles Hill project on our water system. Virginia Beach's study included the creation of a model that looked at a worst-case scenario. And they defined the worst-case scenario as a breach of a mill tailings confinement cell caused by a huge rainfall event during a time of extended drought. And their model showed that this worst-case scenario would cause radioactive contamination of the Bannister River, Carr Reservoir, and Lake Gaston. And very interestingly, their model showed that these contaminants wouldn't enter Peahill Creek, where the pumps are located, unless the pumps were turned on. So basically, the pumps on Peahill Creek kind of suck water out of Lake Gaston. Norfolk's studies results were reassuring in that they showed that our treatment plants are fully capable of treating the expected worst-case scenario contamination levels to meet the current Safe Drinking Water Act requirements. In spite of that, though, there are two potential threats to our ability to provide water that could be caused by the Coles Hill project. The first one is the fact that if there were any kind of an event mishap at the Coles Hill project, surely there would be immediate legal action taken by downstream property owners, particularly around Peahill Creek and around our reservoirs in Suffolk and Islay White County to stop pumping. And if we were, or Virginia Beach was required to stop pumping for an extended period of time during a period of long-term drought, that could compromise our ability to provide adequate water to our customers, and we'd have to implement stringent water conservation measures. The second threat is the potential for there to be safety violations in the Coles Hill project due to the fact that Virginia wouldn't have, the regulators would have inexperience, lack of funding, and would not be fully empowered. And Virginia Beach's study, which talked about the worst-case scenario, assumed that the industry would be following all appropriate safety regulations when, in their study. Our experience with the State of Virginia certainly has not been that they have fully empowered or fully funded environmental regulatory programs to date. And for those two reasons, staff recommends that Norfolk oppose lifting the existing moratorium on uranium mining by adopting a resolution similar to the one that the City of Virginia Beach adopted last month that is very clear in opposition of uranium mining and lifting of the moratorium, and that Norfolk also provide an updated statement in our legislative priority package for the 2013 General Assembly session. And I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Just wanted to add that this was discussed at the HRPDC meeting last week. A presentation was made with the findings from the results, and there was some opposition to the findings, but Virginia Beach has asked HRPDC to take a position on this, and it's going to be voted on at the September Executive Committee meeting. And I think Virginia Beach appreciates our support.
They wrote letters to us sometime ago asking us to adopt an appropriate moratorium. They wrote letters to us sometime ago asking us to adopt an appropriate moratorium. Our water systems are joined at the end, so.
And I think Chesapeake, I think Chesapeake is considering it. I don't know if it, it's going to be as quick as what we're doing, but there seems to be some opposition from Chesapeake as well. Yeah.
And that'll be before you tonight, the resolution.
Yes.
Thank you.
Purpose of this presentation is to provide you with an update on developments related to the Southeastern Public Service Authority, better known as SIPSA, and make recommendations for policy direction for future management of Norfolk's solid waste disposal. Well, background on SIPSA as a reminder, as far as the organization, how it operates and how it's structured, that there are eight member localities, the seven Southside cities, and then the counties and city of Franklin that are directly to the west of Suffolk. That the, the user agreements that we each operate in contract with SIPSA for disposal of our solid waste are set to expire in 2018. And at that point, SIPSA as an authority will be debt-free due to the, the way that the user agreements were set up and our tipping fees that we've been paying for several years now. But also that we'll have assets that have been paid for during its current inception that include a regional landfill, transfer stations, and a transportation system of assets and vehicles. As a reminder, we also had recent, over the past decade, changes in some of the governance, which included the makeup of the board. And as it stands now, it's similar to the HRT board that's getting ready to change in that the governor appoints one person from each member locality, and then that each member locality has one representative. And this year, you appointed me as your representative to serve on that board. This past year, through the Chief Administrative Officers Group, which is a city managers and county supervisors that meet following each monthly PDC and TPO meeting, engaged with the assistance of the PDC, SCS Engineering here in Norfolk, to evaluate potential scenarios for managing solid waste in the region after 2018. The scope of the study looked at institutional and organizational alternatives, you know, what are the options for how you manage as a region your solid waste disposal? Technologies, both current and emerging technologies, disposal options, short and long-term strategies and cost, and then the cost implications of different models of both disposal and organizational makeup as they would impact Norfolk. They also specifically looked at disposal alternatives that are the eastern disposal options for southeastern Virginia, and then what the city of Virginia Beach as a locality would do because they actually do have a landfill in their, within their boundaries. So what alternatives do we have here in the region? Essentially, what we have in the region is two options. You can landfill it, and that is, of course, one asset that SIPSA has. That's the least expensive disposal option. You take all your solid waste and put it straight into the landfill, wet garbage. This also, though, has the potential for limiting the capacity of your landfill because you're filling the land at a more rapid rate. We also have here in the region a waste-to-energy plant. It's a more expensive option for disposal, but it is environmentally sound and expands the life cycle of the existing landfill because you're not putting that, that solid waste directly into the landfill and it, as it's picked up at the curb. Rather, you're putting ash into the landfill. Give you some visual image of how solid waste is collected here in the region. This represents how all the localities that are members of SIPSA do dispose of our solid waste. It's collected, collected at curbside. And if it's recycling or if it's yard waste, it either goes to a recycling facility or you have composting facilities. If it is actual garbage, solid waste, then it goes first to transfer center. And then depending on the mix of what is in that waste, it goes to waste, the waste-to-energy plant, which is over in Portsmouth, or some portions go to the landfill. What goes to the waste-to-energy plant either comes out in the form of energy that they sell, the Navy is the primary customer for the waste-to-energy plant, or it comes out in ash, which is then sent to the landfill. The ash is compacted, and that's why it gives you more life cycle, lifespan capacity for your landfill. There are also some elements that come into the waste-to-energy that are deemed recyclable, and so they're also sent for recycling. At the landfill, obviously, you're filling the landfill, and then you do have the ability for some gases to be sold as energy out of the landfill as well. What do we have in our marketplace? Who are the owners and who have the assets? SIPSA that we're a member of, we have a landfill in Suffolk. Virginia Beach has a landfill. And then Waste Management or subsidiary of Waste Management have the other alternatives. There's over in Newport News, the Bethel landfill, out in Waverly, the Atlantic landfill, and then, of course, over in Portsmouth, the waste-to-energy plant. Gives you some geographic understanding for at least the eastern side of the Commonwealth, where other facilities are. Ones I mentioned here, of course, are within a 25-mile radius from where we are. And then there are other options out in the, in the central and western part of the Commonwealth. So what outcomes best serve Norfolk according to the SCS findings? It indicates that a continuance of SIPSA or a SIPSA-like organization versus a Norfolk-only contract, whether that be with a private entity or otherwise, is the best option. The reasons being that if we did contract only in, Norfolk-only contract, our options for contracting within the region are provided by one private contractor. So essentially, there's little room for negotiation when you're looking for marketplace options. They, they own the landfills that are in close proximity, and they own the waste-to-energy plant. Transportation costs for out of the, of our area are expensive. In SIPSA, we have debt-free assets post-2018 already invested in by our localities, by our ratepayers. And that the, our regional landfill has significant disposal capacity coupled with, especially when coupled with the waste-to-energy option. Some indication of cost to give you a sense of where we are now, where we could be going. Current tipping fee, as adopted in this year's budget, is at $120 per ton. Post-2018, once that debt is relieved and with a waste-to-energy combination, then it's estimated to be around $40 a ton. And what that gives us in our landfill, if you're still using waste-to-energy, is approximately 90 years of capacity in the Suffolk landfill. If we use landfill only, the fee would be significantly lower. However, you have the lifespan of the landfill that will end shortly, and then you have the cost of permitting and acquisition of land or the necessity to contract privately if that's not available. So we're recommending some principles for any future regional solid waste agreement in response to that SCS recommendation. They would include that Norfolk must have an accountable level of local control over the governance of a regional entity. I believe we've had lessons learned over the past couple of decades about SIPSA as an organization. It is in a better place, but we also would have recommendations as a locality for things to be considered, such as weighted voting or other things of that nature. We recommend that any, it must present minimal financial risk exposure for Norfolk. Members should negotiate for disposal waste-to-energy. It seems to make good sense to keep that in the mix for our disposal options. That collectively as members, we should share in all the costs of the operations. And that includes the permits related to future cell development. There are currently three potential cells available out of the nine that were originally contemplated. And most importantly, that operational costs be supported by equal tipping fees amongst all member localities. We would envision that SIPSA could continue to operate the, the operations of this with the transportation, with the transfer stations, contracting with waste-to-energy and landfill operation. And coming upon that would be that we would establish performance and service expectations for all the SIPSA-provided services. And that we need to have a better understanding and clarity for any future obligation requirements to understand what our liabilities are as related to closure, related to the landfill, and permitting for that future expansion within the landfill. So this evening, we are asking for your authorization for the city manager to negotiate with other members of SIPSA to seek a solution to continue, capitalize on SIPSA assets, continue a mutually beneficial and fiscally responsible waste disposal management system. The timeline, because we have had some indication from the other managers, county administrators, is that we would envision that we could develop consensus in a letter of intent by this winter with potential for the drafting of a new agreement with Wheel of Rader mid-2018. Additionally, that then we would have the basis for new user agreement, whether that's directly with SIPSA from locality to SIPSA or joint user agreements across all members with an effective date to be determined, but definitely no later than the sunset of January 2018.
Suffolk, I don't know, they're sort of favorite sons in the, in the present deal. I mean, do they, would they like it, this, the SIPSA to stay the way it is until 2018? I mean, the 120 to 40 makes so much sense, at least from the city of Norfolk's position. We're going to be pushing as hard as we can for a new agreement. Is there some reason that we shouldn't get one sooner than 2018? Or is it just because of, you know, Suffolk's position as having, what they get as the host locality and Beach has a different tipping fee? And are they, are they not agreeable to move even quickly?
More quickly?
Yeah.
I, I believe that, 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 that is a, a great hurdle to get over pre-2018 with their existing user agreements. But it is something that we want to explore.
Each user agreement comes to par in 2015, so that they're, they're a little bit accelerated with 2018.
That's something we, we've had.
Anyway, it just seems to me that, you know, the more attention this gets, the more quickly we can move to, you know, doing something together. Before 2018, the better off the city of Norfolk is really going to be.
There's great willingness amongst, amongst the localities to get this going.
Do you think Chesapeake will stay in?
I believe so.
Ron, a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, we received a presentation that was showing future cost. And I believe the graph showed that there was going to be an increase in tipping fees. So that presentation is no longer valid because of some of the other changes. There was going to be a spike in it, and then it was going to come back down. Does anybody else remember that presentation?
You mean, pre, pre-2018?
I think it was pre, yeah.
I've already experienced that.
Stanley, you did that presentation.
There have been a number of changes.
Okay.
I believe that that, that presentation is still valid for the future.
Okay.
Okay. Obviously, there are annual budget impacts, but we've, we're starting to see the decline in the tipping fee like we experienced this year.
And, and how does that savings get passed down to our customers and their bill?
That's absolutely at that point when we would have reconsideration for what the, what the fee structure is.
Sure.
Hopefully, where we start off, Captain Smiglin, you'd agree, is that we would like to have a solid waste component that's self-supporting. So in other words, if it can pay for itself and placement of vehicles, things of that nature, that's always a starting point. And a lot of things we do, we, we aren't even there. But if we could be self-supporting, then of course, if there's additional revenue, we would accrue that back too. We'd start off with the, the rest of the pay, the payers.
And, and how's recycling tied in with all this? Would that always be separate? Or will the future contract be the same, I mean, would we want a company that does both or would it be separate?
Well, there's, so recycling disposal typically is done by private sector in the, in the region. And, you know, our analysis of the collection of recycling is movement towards, and the, you know, determination we've made for recycling collection in this fiscal year actually is movement towards private contracting for that. So we continue to look at, at that alternatives, but we believe that for that service, that's the best.
So it would have to continue to be separate?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So there's no company out there that's doing both, basically? The ones that are in the area, TFC, I guess is, they're, they're the only ones that are doing the recycling?
Right. There, there's starting to be some industry trends and shifts within the market and the, and the capacity of some of those private sectors to do both.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. All right, thanks, Ron. Thank you. Anything else to manage?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Let me ask you one.
One question yet.
See, we sat here and our, one of our committees listened to these two presentations two weeks ago, whatever. And I know the other committees were here from 2:00 till 7:00. During our retreat, can we look at the concept of maybe having them all, you know, coming an hour, hour and a half early, everybody hearing them once? I notice, you hear them, and two weeks later, you hear it again. And then their committee, I, I'm just, I don't know, I, I don't, I guess, something I'd like to at least look at, whether we just.
I would too. I would mind, well, every, every evening meeting, everybody coming in at four. And, you know, it would be a committee of the whole, you know, and we could, and we could all hear the presentations, and then, you know, you wouldn't have to do two presentations.
Whatever y'all heard today, we're probably.
Sure. You'll hear all about eagles.
Two weeks. And then you'll sit there, and you'll be shopping online.
And we haven't even heard about chickens yet.
Chickens, the chickens are.
We need to hear about chickens. We need to hear.
I think it goes back to the purpose of the committees and where we're going with them. Because I've always thought the purpose of the committee was for us to have healthy discussion and bring issues to light and then get presented. And, you know, I, the chief, fire chief today did a presentation, and we got the whole historical background of the fire department, which I've heard that before, you know, where we came from. And that's great, but really, it was the last five minutes of the presentation, which is where we wanted to go to, which is building new fire stations and talking about, you know, where we go budgetary-wise. That's, I think there was more conversation in that last period than there was during that, so.
I would totally agree. I, I really was kind of flummoxed by the whole premise behind the presentation today on fire. And, you know, I felt like, is that right?
Flummoxed?
I was really confused.
He was our school board chairman.
And to me, the, if there was a concept, and I'm sure there was on committees, it was the idea that an idea was vetted, and then the council members were supposed to tweak it and say, this could be a problem, why don't you look at this? And then it would be revamped and brought to council after those critiques. But now it just seems like it's just run twice. And I'm not shopping, but I could.
But I mean, you could do, you could do the economic development of finance and then, what's the other, the other committee that we're on?
Transportation infrastructure.
We could do that one week and the next week, you know, and take an hour and try to, you know, if you have to come in a half hour early to 3:30 if you really got something. But if you took an hour or hour and 15 minutes and tried to get all of that done, and everybody could come, we would still have the same committees, I mean, and the same committee membership. But if you just had it for an hour, everybody could come and listen to this, then if you don't, and then, and then Tommy, the next week, you guys can have your, spend your hour before the night meeting, and we could all come. I mean, or, or we can just get rid of the committees and we, and just all come. And I would come anyway. I mean, I'd be glad to. If we just started the night meeting at 4:00.
If you're not going to come, if you're going to hear it again in two weeks, just like we heard these two weeks ago, which were great, very informative. Just like we heard these two weeks ago, which were great, very informative, but four of us are sitting here.
I'd like the committee to be more of a healthy conversation, just the council members talking about.
Well, then we need to change the way we're doing it now.
Right. And I, I mean, the committees that we're on, they're kind of redundant. They just, I mean.
We very rarely make the agenda on the committee meetings. We just kind of sit here, and we're told what we're going to be, was presented. And it seemed like there should be a little more interaction. I mean, Tommy was right. Today, the budgetary issue about the fire department was a very small and very brief conversation.
And it was the most important part of that presentation.
Right, and that was what was important. And then our discussion today on the Eagle cam is an important one for you all to know about, so it seems that we're being.
And there was a lot of information presented about eagles and some interesting photos presented, so.
Maybe we just talk about it, and maybe we, we may have what they've talked about, and maybe we all meet together. But I think it'll be presented two weeks later, so listen to it again.
We're always asked, I mean, Anne always asks us what we want to talk about, so we are asked that. I think, though, maybe we're, there's not enough, we're not asking for enough to create a whole, you know, a couple of meetings worth of stuff, so we are, we're getting presentations on things more of an educational-type thing than it is policy.
We got a lot on finance the other day, just was what the financial policies of the city are. We basically got schooled on that. We asked a few questions. I would much prefer just starting the meetings at four o'clock and you making the presentations and then, I mean, because, I mean, I heard at one, I heard Terry and Tommy say, you know, we've been talking, I was kidding about the chicken thing. And they said, well, you know, where's the ordinance? And I'm like, the rest of us haven't seen the presentation on chickens. And I don't want to take up a lot of time on chickens, so I, but I mean.
It's very important.
But you all have seen it two or three times now, right? I mean, a couple of times?
No, I think we've had one presentation on chickens.
It's kind of come back to you, listen to it again while we.
No, we've asked for it to just, I think we've got the, I mean, it was vetted through the committee, and so now it's just a matter of it being presented to full council and ordinance.
And we have, we've been going back and forth with the recommendations by email, but not so much in form.
Right, yeah.
We said in the retreat that we would talk about these things as well as how we conduct ourselves at the work sessions, because we'd never, and the work session is just like this, instead of actually working their critical, their important topics.
Yeah, well, we haven't had a work session.
Right, but I mean, we had talked about that, we would talk about that in the retreat, how we would approach the work sessions, because they're no different than coming in and getting the presentation, just like we do here. Only difference is we don't go out there to the formal session. And a lot of times, we run out of time because there's issues that we're dealing with that, you know, people want to get their point or opinion across, and we run out of time. So you try to be respectful of their opinion, but we never get any true resolve out of it, and then we go out there and then we vote. But in a work session, I thought we would actually tackle those big issues and have resolve at the end of the day, whereas we either agree or disagree, but we at least understand, you know, all the parameters around the decision that we're making at that time, so.
And we can be flexible, that we will do what the council would like for us to do or ask of us. And I don't know who said it, but the philosophy was the committees would be where you iron stuff out, and there would be four people at the committee, four council members. So if there are some issues, you keep it in committee until you get it right, and then you bring it to the informal, and then there's an opportunity after that to vote on it. But again, if it's this process where four people are having to hear something twice, I can see where that becomes a problem.
Like the uranium thing, that could be, come to everybody one time. But if there was an issue that needed work, and I'm going to keep, I'm not, I'm just saying, let's talk about it. I just think when somebody reporting directly to us, be whatever it is, that could be important to everybody. That could have come to everybody, which was, is important, and we needed it, but then the staff has to.
Also, just to be, I mean, honest about it, sometimes in committees, things develop ahead of steam, that the committee members think that is behind it, and maybe the rest of us don't. I mean, I think if you, what was the issue we had a big problem with the other day? The one that you keep mentioning? What is, no, I mean, the other one?
That was the coal fire.
The coal fire thing. You know, it was very important to a few of the council members and to some, but it picked up a real head of steam, and I won't say what it was important, but.
You're getting letters. You're getting letters back.
It was real important. You know, all of a sudden, it was like, you know, I mean, this is the position. And when some of us felt, and I'm not even going to look at Terry or me or something.
Some of us think air is important, others don't.
But if we were all in all those presentations discussions, I think it would make a healthier decision-making process.
Well, I, I mean, I've always assumed the point of those committees is to make policy. That's what I thought. It was to recommend policy, to take an idea that might be discussed in a council concern, and then it goes back into the committee, and it's vetted through that. Like, I think the animal board is an example of that. I mean, that really came from citizens who brought it to our attention, and we spent a year on this. We've gone through it for a year, and we finally hit a point, and it's still controversial, but because of that, we're making a change in policy possibly. You know, there's a new board that's going to recommend changes. That's what I thought the point of those committees were.
Well, some of us come to, come to it later than the people who are working on it. We have our own opinions and.
It also may be the nature of the particular committees you're on. I think economic and finance is less likely to bring up a new issue and more hear reports and, whereas, you know, we've generated some ideas. I know these sound a little strange, but we've got chickens, and we've got bees, and we've got animals, yeah, so, and we've got clean air.
And we have eagles.
And eagles, yeah.
But the economic development could be privy to something going on and be really into it that you might not understand.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Or even agree with.
You would have a fit if we came in here and said, you know what, this thing is time sensitive, we vetted it, it's time for us to do it.
Wasn't there one?
I read the minutes.
We need a resolution here.
There was one thing that you guys talked about three times. Was it Urban Outfitters that went through?
Yeah, they had heard of it.
There were three presentations that that committee had heard.
Yeah, I remember that.
Was it Urban? I don't know if it was Urban. It might have been something.
Just food for thought, I mean, I don't see.
I think it's a good topic, and I would think that perhaps we could expand on this in the retreat. If anybody else is interested.
The other thing that Andy brought up, I brought that up some time ago, but with different parameters, you know, you talked about you, Terry, and Tommy taking five boards and going to the meetings. That's not realistic, you know? You're talking about all these boards meet certain times, planning commission meets half of the day, Norfolk redevelopment housing meets all day. And so what I had proposed is that a, that we have staff people who would attend these meetings who were here, who were working from, you know, who has the time to do that and come back and give us a report. But if you and Terry and Tommy wants to take on that role and go into every board, every...
Did you gavel this yet, or is he saying something?
I mean, you said.
It's going to look upstairs, because that's not what I meant. Now, just think I said.
He didn't get the finish.
Might as well gavel it now.
He didn't get the finish going around, wait, wait. He didn't get the finish going around saying names, but it was everybody.
You're telling with the liberation.
I mean, I didn't go into every meeting.
I think that we should attend certain of these meetings. I went to the arts meeting, Public Arts Committee. I've been to Potomac Gardens. I'm not saying go every time, Anthony, but I want their notes. I want to know what they're doing.
That's why I said we would send the staff to them, and to keep us pressed. But we don't, we don't send them to, unless it changed. We don't send them to the Norfolk redevelopment housing authority. We have somebody in planning.
Andy, we're getting you a super board, buddy.
I think even what's more.
I want their notes. If they take notes at their meeting, I want their notes.
What's more important is how attendance is taken to at those meetings.
Yeah, attendance should be on the top of the notes.
I think that every, every worrying commission, it should be mandated that we, they take attendance, and it's reported on the same form for something so that we know what's going on. It's not, maybe it's just not reported to Breck to be able to put in that form, because some of them we don't have attendance for unless we specifically ask.
Well, I think it's an excellent idea for us to receive the minutes. And I think that we ought to be constantly kind of looking at this, because some of these groups may have outlived their usefulness. I mean, we just routinely do that. We routinely fill these boards, and yet we're, many of us may not even know if they're, what they've accomplished. I mean, I think we're all aware of some of the bigger boards, but some of these others, I think would be hard for us to find out what they've actually, what their role is, and many of them might feel the same way.
I'd like to mention some of the.
Um, I don't want to say anything.
Breck has one. What is that one that we can't, the one we've put aside and put aside, Breck?
The appeal one.
I know, so, what is it, Breck?
We don't point that one.
We're wrestling with the health services.
That's nice.
Yes.
We're wrestling with this. Historic and architectural preservation.
No, no. That one is at the top.
I was going to see which one she was going.
I knew it was coming up, that's why, didn't want to get personal.
But there could be the bigger ones we should continue meeting with, and maybe we don't have to have it, but like planning and school board, schedule more meetings with them jointly, but then the other ones that we are not as recognized as much by the public, those maybe are the ones that can be divided up.
Perhaps.
Just have communication with the person who's responsible for it.
Right, but there's no reason that I can't have the school board minutes delivered to me when they're, when they're done.
Actually, we're doing that for quite a while.
I want those.
We were getting school board minutes.
Yeah, but I want those. I want those sent, those should be coming to us.
Those are in our drop box. We do get those, but we should get the other ones too.
Yeah.
And I also think it's reasonable to at least have somebody that's a liaison.
Yeah, I think so.
So that if you, you know, didn't necessarily have to go to all the meetings, but if the chairman of our POS has some issues that they wanted us to address, that, we would be the ones they would call.
Yeah. A good example for school board is, let's say they, something comes along, they want something to be brought to us. Well, if they have to go through the manager's office, and frankly, the manager's office could, and I'm not saying this is done with the school board, they could put them off. And I have been told by a board that they've been put off, they can't get a meeting. Fine. If you picked up the phone and said, Marcus, you're going to meet with this guy, or get Anne to meet with him, or Daryl, then it's going to happen. And see, we don't need to be in that position that, you know, for some reason, they can't get into the manager's office to meet with the manager or one of his assistants, then it, that is, that shouldn't be happening, where they should be able to contact you, Terry, and say, you know, Terry, we're looking at school board, we're looking at, we need another 50 million next year, and this is what we want to do with it. We need you to begin looking and talking to the manager and getting that information over there. Because, yeah, they can do it from the everyday work side, but it's different when it comes on the political side. And that's really where I think we seem to be missing the boat on that.
For me, it's more so from the disconnect. There's that disconnect. Boards and commissions struggle to understand what our goals and objectives are.
Right.
You know, from an economic standpoint, from a school district standpoint, and if we're driving the train from a policy standpoint, and we're having discussions around here that are very important, it doesn't filter down nor does it filter up.
Right.
That's why I said we need to have liaisons, so people could understand, I mean, they can look at these meetings, but the reality of it is, they need to know what our position is on economic development. So they could begin to formulate some plan, goals and objectives that filter down to economic development. Same thing with schools, understanding what's important to us. Same thing with Norfolk redevelopment housing authority. We all have wards, we all have challenges, challenges within that ward, looking at what, understanding what Norfolk redevelopment housing mission is, what their objectives are, but more importantly, how do that, how does their goals and objectives align with ours? That's why it's important to have folk to, at our meeting, giving information to them and vice versa. There are some things that we do as relates to Norfolk redevelopment housing authority in terms of acquisition and demolition, dual services, that we could look at how we could work together. You go out there, you see here's the city land, there's NRHA land. NRHA will cut the grass here, leave the city land not cut. That's ridiculous, you know? And so there's a lot of services, a lot of conversations that need to be had, and I think that's why it's important to create these lines of communication that will, that will help us be able to serve the citizens more.
And the reason I brought it to the table, Paul, I really dealt with that, the philosophical issue of policy going down or coming up. And it was when we were talking about that one particular board, and I said, well, if our policy is X, I'm not going to have, I'm the elected official, vote me out, that's fine, but if I'm going to eat it for a particular board, if I'm going to eat it for a particular board's policy that we're not telling them what we want it to be, I got a problem with that. It should be coming from the top down. It is a two-way street on the communication issue, and that's exactly what I meant, was not only us going there and hearing what they're doing, but also communicating our collective vision to those particular boards. I think that's really significant. You don't have to be at the meeting, but let's say Terry gets the minutes of CSB. She looks at, she says, you know, well, there's an issue here, then that's something that she can begin finding out a little bit more about, and then she can come back and say, you know, I talked about this, and this is a problem that CSB's having. So that really, it's really a two-way street of communication. Yeah, it's really a retreat issue.
All right. Okay, we'll start.